Okay, welcome to the planning board meeting for October 5th, 2015. Thank you H. Chan for taking the meeting. I got an email earlier today from the Frank Sebo, his father is in the hospital. Yeah, he said day by day, so I guess keep Frank and his family in prayers. We're going to be continuing the public hearing for the library a little later on in the agenda. And we're going to have to have a serious question as to whether or not you guys want to go on today or not. Let's talk about it first for just a second.
Good evening. You can sit right there. I'll get you some water. You can sit right there. We'll talk to the library later.
As I see it, we're going to lose Kat Mahon, who probably is going to have some trouble showing up. But if we lose Frank Sebo, that puts us down to six members.
I'm in case.
Because you're recruits, but then there's only four of us to hear it tonight.
That's not quorum though, the board.
Correct. It's not a quorum of the board.
Is Brian coming?
I thought he was. I haven't heard that he wasn't.
He left Frank.
Durso is not, what I understood.
He's ill.
He's ill. I think we have a logistical problem beyond our collective abilities to cure it. Maybe we'll just have to try to see.
I'm thinking that just because we're getting down to it, and I'm sorry you're all here. And we are. The other point, from what I believe, is the design review board has asked you back, and they meet again on the 20th.
Right. We were here on the 19th anyway for the affordable permit, and we thought, based on where we were, we have things to do with you as well. I think we'll use that slot and we'll use it productively, frankly, based upon the informational flow. And at least then, we hope we have enough members that can hear, question, deliberate, and vote. I'd be nervous, frankly, about going forward in a kind of lack of quorum or a lack of membership situation. I don't think it's a good one.
Okay. So at that point, I think we will obviously continue it. We continue it at, on the 19th.
Eight o'clock.
At eight o'clock, which is the same time as...
Yes, that special permit.
The special permit.
Which I suggest will be a relatively straightforward and brief hearing based on the final.
So, before motion to continue it to eight o'clock on the 19th. So, move in second. Further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm sorry if this didn't anywhere.
Good evening.
Try that again. While we're in the mode of continuing, that was at eight o'clock. It was saying, that, we just did that at eight o'clock. And what do we have the rest of the night?
At 7:30, there's a public hearing on the zoning mask amendment.
Yep.
At 8:30, there's the Wafferty Road Plan.
Okay.
If the library also scheduled for?
No, that's what we're talking about continuing. Where we are in the library is there's, I think, privacy been made. There was a draft agreement between the town and St. John's Church.
You should probably wait for the post to hear to talk about it though.
Okay, you think of...
Yeah, I think you should wait.
Okay, so you're not going to let until 8:30 to continue it, huh? Okay, okay. We will wait. Okay, so next item is to approve the minutes of 9:15, 2015. Any comments, questions?
Second.
Move in second. Further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Then so through. Okay. Let's see. Claire and John, I think you were working, well, let me start off with a little bit. They, they're ready to, I think, talk about the community facilities and services. I heard Fran, who's a grapevine, that you're meeting with the chamber to talk about commercial.
Getting additional feedback, yes.
So that's good. I view that as good progress.
Yes.
Whoever else has got sections to write, please start writing.
And, Mr. Chairman, if we have a little extra time, because I also need to get my two cents in, and I was not here for the discussion on the housing section last week. I have my two cents at some point I'd like to add.
Okay, okay. We can, we, we have till 8:30. Okay, so, you want to start the discussion with community facilities and services?
And I, Paul, I mean, I looked at your section, Ken, you actually did all the wordsmithing. John and I kind of just, I just threw out ideas and thought we would leave it to the author to add that in that person's words, whether it's Elaine or Ken or whatever. So we didn't do as, as full a rewriting was needed.
That's good. I think that was the way we kind of left it. You don't have to go, you know, quite all pros.
Right. Claire had did a, start the process going, and then my chair of the board had likely agreed on everything that she had done. I added a few comments, you know, within the statement, but I think the concept going with this, the town has changed, the demographics have changed. We have more multifamily housing, and we have more 55 and over, and that creates different demands. So I just wanted to give that a little bit of a preface on looking at that.
Yeah, and you know, looking at the comments that were made last week about the housing, I think they fit very much with some of the remarks that we have here. The seven bullet points are just the seven major topics that I think should be included somewhere in there. I think we've all been talking about the parking issue, how whether it's a facility or it's reconfiguration of existing parking or shared parking, that, that needs to be addressed somewhere in this document as a, as a facility slash service that the town really needs to address. And along with that, just the issue of traffic management is just something that is coming up with almost every proposal, how, you know, how we address that. That really affects our quality of life. I know, I personally have been concerned about, there's a lot of focus on, you know, new buildings, but we have existing buildings that need to be cared for and addressed. Right off the top, there's a big question mark about center school. We're moving, you know, very drastically forward towards a new school building, but you can't take a building and just mothball it. That really needs to be part of our facilities plan going forward. Need some ideas for that.
Do you think that we should suggest some reuse of that? I mean, we sent the selectmen a letter suggesting that they form committee to really look at that effort, but would you think in a master plan to try to get the ball rolling on that, that we throw out a couple of ideas?
Yeah.
As straw pressing. And, you know, Arvid, we've talked about like a school administration building, I'll say the historic part, and maybe Parks and Rec is kind of interested in a youth center in the 84 edition gym, and the six classrooms, elevator, and bathrooms that they have back there. And that'd be one suggested. If people weren't interested in that, I think in the older building, you could do senior public housing.
That's done in the local towns.
And, and is owned by the housing authority as opposed to private. I mean, I honestly think if you sell off that old, the old building, you're going to get nothing for it, because it's going to cost a fortune to regather. And I think, I personally think we need to kind of keep it as facing the common, as a, as a public.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
I mean, so there's a couple of good reasons, but, you know, there's a lot of people saying just sell it and get rid of it, but I'm not quite in that mode at this point.
I'd be surprised if there were more people willing to do that versus have a good reuse where it benefits the whole town, keep the historic character of that, you know, beautiful building, and, you know, a lot of people come back and they will stroll by that building and be very happy.
And both of those, you know, it's one day a year, but the marathon uses that as kind of a headquarters for a lot of the stuff. And, you know, that's, that's, that's only kind of one, one day, so you can't really do stuff on one day, but it's, I'm just worried when people see the impact of all the capital spending that this town is doing or about to do, that they'll be looking to sell.
Can you say now?
Good point.
You know, also, and I mentioned further down, unknown effects of 1,400 new housing units. I think that all this new housing that's in the pipeline but has yet to be built, it's really hard to measure what the true impact is going to be, but it's unquestionable that there's going to be an impact on our facilities and our services. And, you know, do we want to be a throwaway society where we just take a building and throw it away and then build something new and, you know, go to the taxpayers for a whole new building when we haven't? Because it's always been a town facility where we've got these needs that we know are going to be coming. It would seem to be wasteful and short sighted to discard a really, you know, the old buildings are well made, really well built, perfectly located town building. And, you know, the parking facility, that can team up with the center school use as well, because if you don't need all those athletic fields and back, there's, there's a lot of room for, for parking, which could be expected to be within quote unquote reasonable lot and distance to all the downtown needs, including the library. I mean, you know, I don't know how long the grant with St. John's might work for the library, but to eventually create some sort of a central town parking lot on the other side of the common, it's not unreasonable to expect people to walk across the common against the library or any of the downtown things.
Here.
So, anyway.
And if I may add, just with the, as Claire mentioned, with the 1,400 additional housing units, administrative offices, whether it's town hall or overflow from any of the other entities, that's another potential use for that building.
Sure. Well, you think, you know, if the back building goes to Parks and Rec and that youth center, those services probably migrate there, which frees up a few spots here. You know, we need a documented storage somewhere in town, which, you know, might be a great place to put it in the basement or something like that. And I mean, it's, I, I think there's a lot of use for that. So I, I think, I think the consensus is that we're agreeing that we want to put something in there, but we want to flesh out that paragraph a little bit more and try to get people excited about the possibilities.
Sure. No, it's an idea, just to, you know, get the creative juices flowing.
And if, if, if nothing else, when this goes to all the town boards and committees for comment, it'll start the discussion.
Exactly.
Yeah, right.
Exactly.
Okay.
Beyond, below that, I mentioned maintenance, and, you know, I've gotten the impression from a number of town meetings or discussions about eating groups and all kind of things, that we're all for building new stuff, but there, some of our town maintenance is reactionary, and people don't like that. They say, did you plan on this? Why hasn't this been done? Why are the kids, you know, in freezing cold classrooms are with booze looking because it didn't, you know, get planned? I have heard stories, I don't know if they're true or not, that, for instance, the Cultural Arts Alliance Center, it's great they've got the new center, but the Cherry Farm House, which the town owns, that there are parts of the upstairs that are dangerous. I don't know if that can be fixed or not, or not. I just think there should be a stated goal, that there be maintenance plans for all our facilities.
If I may, my last, at the end of the permanent building committee, we did come up with a master plan for the maintenance of the buildings, what had to be looked at and identified. So I think it's a matter of updating and adhering to the plan that's been done. So the plan's there for the buildings, whether it's being followed or not, that I can't tell you.
Right, it lacks oversight.
Right. It's been presented and, like other things at times, may not be implemented fully.
Who's responsible for that? Who's responsible for ensuring that that maintenance plan actually?
The discussion at the time was that the budget for repair and maintenance was going to set in lieu of, this is outside of the schools, so the schools have their own budget, but for the town buildings was going to be in the facilities department as opposed to each individual department's budget, and it was up to the facilities engineer to make sure it was followed and adhered to.
So it may be a matter of, that's too much for that one person to take on, to oversee all of those, you know, all of those buildings and the infrastructure that goes along with it.
Or it might be being done and we just don't know that.
Yeah. Might bring up the example of the town maintenance facility, and what I heard at a town meeting was deplorable, you know, so how long had, has that been identified? You know, how long were they in need of, you know, new accommodations, really?
You know, DPW's been a sore spot for a long, long time for facilities, anyway. Yeah, maybe we...
You know, could have heard you just comment out that that's an important part of facilities, is making sure that maintenance is baked into the cake, not just...
I think that's the current status.
Yeah.
Yeah. It doesn't... Let me try to name it.
Yeah.
So, I, we also were feeling that, you've been talking about this substation, the fire substation, and I would think with the South Park looking close to completing, working on the North, but considering we're not going to do the master plan again for a little while, isn't the time upon us to start talking about actual plans for this, plans to construct it, like between the next master plan?
Perhaps, but I haven't heard much of an increase in the need, and quite frankly, you can get from our central firehouse to Legacy Farms, if I was going to build it, I'd be building it or opening up one in the western side of town.
Just the last I heard from the fire chief was that something on the other side of the highway might be more necessary than something on this side.
And wasn't there funding in that, from legacy, Renee Grant?
If there was going to be something, they would make a contribution.
Yeah.
But the town had to decide that there was going to be something, and it was small money.
Yeah, it was, it was less than a hundred thousand, if I remember correctly.
Because all those buildings over there are surplus.
But, for instance, they were saying just like the additional senior housing and the anticipation that some of these smaller bedroom units might be occupied by older people. Are you going to keep people staying? That's where most of the calls come from. They already all come Davis Road, and then if you're going to be adding, you know, 180...
One of the things I think the selective are also thinking about looking at, I heard some discussion, is whether or not they, they sub out the EMT type work, because that's where, 90-something percent of the, of the calls are EMT related as opposed to fire emergency and, you know, building, an ambulance building and serve, you know, that's a different thing than a full fire station. I, but, you know, we could, we could certainly call something out in there, but I'm not 100% sure that people have said there's a, a real need for expanded...
At the time of the plan, there was discussion on the potential need for one there, when that, on the Legacy Farms area, when it was completed, and stating that the Woodville Fire Station, we couldn't fit the equipment in the fire station. And if you, one prime example of almost an abandoned building, that said it's basically used for storage at this point. So that did come up for discussion, but in light of future growth, we may need it as opposed to a definitive, we will need it. And at that time, it was stated, if we did that, then the Woodville Fire Station would become surplus.
Well, we do have master plan of what, how often?
Five years.
Five years.
Closer mine.
Closer mines.
Yeah. Even behind the worlds and the uncertain effects, and, I mean, last year during the budgeting process, I remember the fire chief, Ken Clark, pleading for more resources. It was a kind of news story.
A lot of the people that town...
Yeah, but, I mean, you know...
Well, they also converted all the people that were doing his call center, which inspired...
Right, they moved it over, but that's before you've got 1,400 more residents. So I, I would think between now and five years from now, that maybe you don't say, I know I asked for something to be more proactive, and maybe you don't say build it or implement it, but I, I think that maybe as, as a planning item, something that we need, one of the balls that we need to keep our eye on for planning in the next five years would be possible additional emergency services, whether it's, you know, the entry or, or a substation based on the anticipated growth. You know, this is just, this is just a planning door.
I'd say growth is a possible legacy plan, too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But, you know, you, you have to assume that with this much increase in population, there's going to be a correlating increase in need for these services, so.
There's also an issue, when they did the Ashland hockey department, they plotted where the calls are, and there's 100 calls a year on the highway. So there's a demand to the highway as well, if it's on, to consider. So, and if the congestion is improved and accidents increase, then there'll be more calls.
Okay, so that's one planning thing. Yeah, just, you know, the fact that what all this new housing is going to portend is still kind of an unknown for us, but it's, it's sure to affect a variety of, you know, facets of how our town operates. And what John had found about the, the growth in the 55 and over age group...
Was an estimate projected to 13, was a 50% growth from 2000 to 2013. So change in demographics of the town, which may be as a result of the additional multifamily or smaller condo housing units.
Do you think that people who used to get older would perhaps go to Florida or something? Now they're not going with as many as, you know, the larger group?
I think, if I, through the chair, the discussions we had, I think when on, do we need these, when I go on the discussion on legacy, was exactly that, that people are not, as many people were leaving, that people left because there was no place for them in the area. And if you provide the resources in the area for them where they can live, then they may in fact stay. And as I heard today on the news, there were some people moving back from South Carolina.
You gotta hurry.
Maybe more people are getting older than used to.
No, it is, but it's true. It's a larger, older population than we've ever had.
Yeah.
Well, you know, and this doesn't apply to any, I was just thinking when I was reading the housing section too, that if we do look at housing mixes and the provision for more, you know, a way to find, I've always talked about smaller, single-family homes that where people could age in place, the kind of homes that, you know, my parents lived in until they were 90, because they weren't the five-bedroom houses, they had to move out. But, you know, if you, you provide those kinds of, that kind of diversity in your housing stock, you, you will keep your older, older people, and I mean, I've always bemoan that right when people get to the age of, they've had time to serve on town boards, because if they're still the five-bedroom houses, move out of town.
Dodge.
You know. Dodge. So, these were just bullet, I mean, page by page points. Should I go through these, Ken, or just...
Here you go, Phil.
Okay.
We've got, we have a bunch of time, we have to do, we can't afford to go 8:30.
All right. They're quick.
We're on 8:30.
If you have the community facilities section here, the first one was on page two, can the description of the, oh, yes, there was a long description here about the inadequate DPW facility, and it sounds to me like we're well on our way. So for the new ones who probably don't need the gory details of how awful the old facility is, maybe just something that...
Talk about how good the newer...
Yeah, right. General statement that it was outdated and onward here. Okay, fire station is just a place to mention the substation thing, so we just discussed that. Page three, the library, oh, it looks like construction of National 2016 at this point.
Yeah.
So change that. Page three, senior center...
Just projected growth of the 55 and over.
Major added. Four, playing fields, this seemed a little outdated to me because it went over this need, this need for playing fields, and it seems to me that things may have sort of leveled on. We've got the legacy field without a purpose. We've got a lot of new housing that was designed not to bring school kids in. We've just redone the Fruit Street Master Plan to dedicate more of that to possible recreation. I just, I just thought that maybe this should be addressed, that it may be not going to need, but not, not described with the level of urgency that this...
So Claire, did you speak with anybody at Parks and Rec about that?
No, I didn't. I'm just looking at what we've experienced in the last year or so, and not knowing what to do with this one up the street.
What, which one up the street?
Legacy Farms.
No, they have all sorts of play in store.
Trust me. If he gives me the okay, I'll take that, feel my heartbeat. I will tell you that I go and speak from a baseball perspective, that every field from April 1st to August 1st is full every single day.
So you're still...
So I think there's a need, I haven't, I spoke with Amy recently on the soccer side, but, you know, speaking with a couple of folks on their board, they're continually looking for opportunities. I know there's some things evolving with Fruit Street.
Yeah.
But, so I would just, I, I think there is some need, and that's not accounting for any of what you identified there with legacy growth or with the news growth, even if that's small, it would be something I think you need to just consider.
Yeah, I hear from Parks and Rec, and, you know, a lot of what they're going to spend on Fruit Street is to rehab the two fields they are, move one a little bit out of the well field, et cetera. And that's kind of the, I'll say, the easy, easy stuff. They're waiting a lot on what's happening with the International Marathon Center for Legacy Farms, because I've seen plans with everything from indoor swimming facility to indoor gymnasium to, I mean...
Outdoor fields and a whole company.
I mean, they've got a bunch of items that they, they don't want to do with that land, and I think that's all really, they're waiting on to see whether or not that somebody's going to fund the International Marathon.
That's the domino that falls.
Yep. And in the meantime, they're using some of the money that CVC gave them over on Fruit Street.
Okay, so you don't feel the pressure's off necessarily?
I don't think, I wish it was.
All right, all right, well, then leave it alone. That was just, that was my impression from the stuff of legacy.
And there's also a lot of talk to put a turf field behind the high school, too, which...
Okay. Page five, town common, just thought it would be good to put a mention in of the... the fountain being restored. Also, page five, Center for the Arts, that could, you could mention its pretty much completion by the time this gets done.
Sure.
What do we have on page eight? Page eight, oh, yeah, I just want to use this title. The last paragraph on page eight says, "The inability to obtain water from the town or a private well has not made many lots unbuildable."
That's right.
Is it? I would have thought that it would have made them unbuildable. If you can't get water, how can you make a?
Well, you can't get it from the town, you can sink a well, and it gets deep enough where you eventually find water.
People have been successful at finding it.
It might be 800 feet down, but there, I don't think there's any piece of property that is failed to put a house on it because of well.
Well, this says the inability to obtain water from the town or a private well. You're saying you can get it out of a private well.
You can get it out of a private well. That's what I, we can maybe clean up the wording, make it a little.
Yeah, maybe wordsmith does, I mean, that, reading that, I would say, how can you possibly build on a lot if you can't get water from a well?
Probably, but you can get, I don't, I haven't heard of any lot, interrelate, have you heard of any?
Well, then you are able to get it from a well. Well, wordsmith that a little bit, so it's clear that. What do I have on page 10, third paragraph, oh, in the discussion of trails, something about the railbed trail, that's, that's been, with the trail people, kind of a priority for.
Why don't, why don't we ask the Trails Committee to comment on that paragraph?
I think there's a large section about that in the natural resources section, so they can mention it here, but there's a bigger section.
Okay, well, just mention it in terms of the trails, because that has certainly been a, a set of piece of our, our trail objectives, so just give it a follow.
There is also is a tie-in with the natural resource section on the land and the water, protecting the water resources.
And since we have purchased that Pratt property for, you know, recreation scouting water resource protection, I would think somewhere in here, there needs to be some mention of the Pratt, of the Pratt land.
Okay.
Okay, and then generally, in the goals, I just got kind of cranky about the word study. I would like to see more action where, if possible, we can implement things or enact things or.
[laughing].
So that's, that's the, let's see.
I can comment on the, go on the open space. On the open space committee, we've targeted as one of the major objectives for any new open space commitments, are those properties which protect and support the act of recharge.
Yes. Goal two, that was one where I wanted to study and implement, if possible. I'm just, I get tired of studying this and having studies on a shelf, I want to get some, get some results out of it. Goal three, the library fundraising, is this on a date? Are they pretty much?
Yes, so the 2007 goals were there for reference, but you could come up with new goals, so those aren't necessarily current goals, those are the old goals.
Yeah, okay, because, I mean, I think the funds, support the fundraising and building expansion plans, that's going to be a little out of date. The fire department realization, that's out of date, they decided they didn't want to do that. Study the need for fire substations, that's where I wonder if we would begin implementation, but maybe not, just, just plan. But, yes, add, add some parking, finding solutions to the parking, increasing parking needs, particularly in the downtown, whether it's new, shared, or reconfigured. Add, understand the demographic shifts and the potential impact on town facilities. Under four, under sewer, oh, and can you relate? I mean, the way this was worded, talking about sewer service, and maybe it's just semantics, to me, there's service and there's capacity, and in my mind, service just means maybe you're putting the piping, the facilities to deliver the services, but you have to have the capacity, which is the discharge areas, and you can't provide the service without the capacity, so I felt that.
Maybe you say service and capacity.
Exactly, provide increased sewer capacity.
Yep.
Is very, and also encouraging the development of private facilities, like legacy, putting their own.
Reuse is doing the same.
Because, again, you know, ideally for recharge, you'd rather have facilities right on site that are going to put it back into the groundwater rather than, than taking it away anyway, so.
The, one of the areas that I think the 2020s looking at is, one of the street from itself.
Okay, yeah, goal five, just study, encourage implementation. Again, I don't know if they need to study, that we can study it, but can, are we at a point where we can also encourage these to actually be used if they're, you know, state-of-the-art solutions are available? Can we encourage implementation?
State of art sewer service, that's, to me, is, you know, where the needs are, and where there are charges going into, you know, areas that affect water around Woodville, I would think that it's an area where it'd be high on my list, besides, you know, the commercial stuff that really is needed to make it feasible, so over straight.
So are we going to study it, or are we going to also implement it? Or is there a problem?
I think that maybe, I mean, we want to, more in implementation, yes.
Okay, so we want to study and implement.
Yep.
Right, okay. And finally, six, there again, I was talking about maintaining and improving recreation facilities, and under that, things like stewardship and maintenance. There've been some instances in town of, you know, there's lots of trails developed and open space developed, but we don't have much in the way of a stewardship program where, you know, the trails are maintained, and people, for instance, there's been, there's a situation going on right now with the College Rock trails, half, which is in Hockington, the most beautiful part, part where the College Rock is, is in Hockington, which is used by climbers, and nobody ever checks on that place, and now the graffiti has gone out of control on this beautiful rock, because there was no oversight at all, and we're talking about, you know, maybe a group, the trails or whatever, some groups that adopted some of these facilities, but we can't just continue to develop these things and just let them go. So, you know, I would like some of the groups to develop some kind of a situation oversight as we develop, you know, trails and open space, so.
And there has been discussion on open space, you know, on the maintenance of the trails, et cetera. And there's historical issues where people were maintaining it because somebody years ago said, oh, you want to maintain it, that's fine. So I think, and I saw Claire's comments on that, it'd make perfect sense, a more definitive plan on the maintenance of these trails.
In fact, when John Coolidge was on the board, he was very involved with stewardship things, how various areas that have open space will actually, different groups or people will adopt stewardship, so that they walk the boundaries and check them, see if there's any.
That's a requirement of all the CPC funded stuff, because you end up giving that stewardship to, say, haunted, they take it on for a small fee, and down with, basically, and then, yeah, they do walk the boundaries, and there's a checklist, and they have photos starting from when they adopted the place, so you can compare what you saw, and they're always, I think, looking for volunteers to, to do some of that, too, but it's, it's part of what kind of goes with it.
Is there any incentive with the stewardship at all, to be a steward? I mean, or is it out of the goodness of one's heart?
I don't, I don't know, I suspect that most of halt in organizations like that is goodness of your heart, but John Coolidge used to be paid by the Audubon Society as steward to walk. And so the bigger organizations that have.
Funding.
Funding and income, or, you know.
Sure, to be able to create some degree of incentive.
They have a little bit more of a paid staff, and halt is, I think relies mostly on, you know, scouts and folks.
It'd be great to give people that have intrinsic reward to steward.
Yep, well, I think that's kind of what you're doing, but do you have enough of those, or do you advertise it well enough?
That's the.
Well, maybe there's an opportunity with the scouting organizations in town where, you know, those scouts come looking for, you know, their projects, that they, you know, can work with somebody who, you know, is knowledgeable and can point them in the right direction, and, you know, some of the College Rock could get on the list.
Halt has worked with the scouting organizations very effectively.
And there was some criticism a few years ago, I hadn't heard it recently, that Concom doesn't walk there. You know, before we had open space, Concom was the recipient of all this open land, and I think Don is out there looking at the property more.
They'd like to look at that some more, and that's actually what Jennifer's doing as well, working with them.
So, I mean, I think some of that's being addressed, per se, but it's.
Well, I think it doesn't hurt to point out that this is something we should be working towards, making sure we do, because there are areas where it's not getting done.
It's, it's kind of the same with maintaining your buildings, you're making your open spaces to make sure that people aren't trashable.
Yep.
And trails are cleared and, yep.
And, you know, even with things like vandalism, graffiti, the biggest incentive is people knowing that nobody cares. If, you know, stuff gets addressed, the message is, it's the broken windows theory, that, you know, you don't let it stand. If you do let it stand, you get more of it, you know, so. The last two things were from John, it looks like.
Looking at it as, again, the 55 and over population, the impact on the facilities, and also with the multifamily facilities that we have, you're not necessarily looking at recreational facilities that may be on site. And the multifamily facility, housing may in fact demand more access to recreational than if there were similar number of housing units that were single-family, larger lots, et cetera. So just a recognition that the demand may be greater than it appears just with the increase of housing units.
Fastest growing sport in Hockington today is cricket.
On that last one, John, if it's a goal, maybe that should start off with an action where they have developed and maintained, maybe it should, that right now is just a statement, maybe it should be an action, like monitor need for increased recreational facilities due to, the wordsmith in the house can change that around, so it's an action thing.
So why don't we, why don't we let the wordsmith take, I think he's on it, I think, Elaine, you've got a sense of where the board's going, and then we'll review it one more time for that chapter, and then we can, I'll just write it down in the draft. And Claire, you had some housing stuff that was left over from last time, go ahead.
Okay, we shouldn't go at eight-thirty?
Yes, we are. Well, I can, I got other things I can fill a few minutes, you don't have to fill a bunch of sort of whole five minutes.
I'm not going to, no, no, just if I don't get all in, I can do a number, a number of questions here. Nobody has a question, so, you can. Oh, oh, this is a funny little typo for you. On page three, it says that they're in log or homes, unless they're beer homes, beer, beer, I think they're larger homes.
Probably.
They could be log or homes, I don't know, depends on what's going on in the home. What did I have? Questions for you here. Oh, my questions are all in the last 10 or 11, the goals page. You were talking in the meeting about eliminating the Affordable Housing Committee right now, you convened and appointed it.
Well, no, it's, it hasn't been, it hasn't been re-convened.
Yeah.
It is not in existence today. It's been like four years since that committee.
Oh, so, okay, this is actually to be reconvened?
If, if our chapter 40B is in doubt. So it's, it's proactive, if we start getting close to our 10%, then that committee ought to get activated, right now there's not a need for it.
Well, wait, well, there is, absolutely, the point I want to make, and it did convene last, last June, as a matter of fact, or maybe here before, as long as there's a fund, an Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Those guys still need.
Oh, okay, all right, this is the committee, but not the trust fund.
Correct.
Oh, all right, because my point was, if there's a fund, there needs to be an active board that can access those funds, assure the demand.
Yep.
Come on, okay, okay.
And that board can spend their money to go buy things.
Right, because I, because I meant it was on last, last year. Okay, we've talked about two different things, and then, never mind, that's fine.
There's, there's three affordable housing type committees, there's the Housing Authority, there's this committee, and then there's a trust committee.
Yep.
And somehow, maybe you can buy them all or something, I don't know.
No, no, my concern was that it was a suggestion that we, that we did not, do away with a committee that may need to get access to their funds when we have no way, no way to approach. Okay, again, I'm just answering my questions, the trust fund thing. Oh, just on historic things, on 11, you mentioned maintaining a list of properties subject to demolition delay. Right now, all that is needed is that that, the way the demolition delay bylaw is written, if the property is 75 years or older, it is subject to demolition delay. If you wanted to do a list, Elaine wrote right here, we have 27% of our properties that are over 50 years old, and 433 are before 1900. I mean, do you want to make a list of 433 houses? I think.
The ancestors have that.
It's a lot easier if you have a question on the product, property, to just look it up, is it 75 years?
No, I think that what I was trying to say with that one is, you could, the Historic Commission could go through that list of 400 and something and say, these are ones, I don't care what it is, I don't even want to keep these. And those that aren't, you're on a list that you're okay.
Well, no, and we have discussed that on the board, there's a reason that you do a, a date, timely demolition delay, according to Mass Historic, and it's because sometimes it's the context of the property, there are some houses, some properties.
That's, I'm not doing the criteria, I'm just saying, have the list, so that if you want to go buy a house, do you know whether you're.
Well, all you need right now is if you know if the house is 75 years or older, it's subject.
Right.
And that's all we need, because that's what the demolition delay bylaw says. If we want to undo that and make more properties, protect fewer properties than you do with a, go with a list, but for instance, some of our properties right now, their value is because principally they're part of the streetscape. Like we have a lot of the 19th century mill houses, and it's not that this one individual house is so unique, it's the fact that it's part of a contiguous whole that shows that that mill house period in our, in our town.
Sure, whatever the criteria, I'm not saying what the criteria is, I'm not proposing the planning board to set, put the list up, I'm saying, the Historic Commission, or somebody should be putting a list together and propose that people don't, don't need, you know, it'd be better, easier to sell your property if you knew that, you know, it's not something to relate.
The Historic Commission has discussed if we want to go to a list-only method and decided that the existing demolition delay bylaw, 75 years or older, which is passed by the town, works appropriately.
Okay.
And so to put this along our housing goals is stating something that the Historic Commission does not support. So I am very much opposed to putting something in our master plan that is contrary to what the Historic Commission. So I am very much opposed to putting something in our master plan that is contrary to what the historic commission has decided is in the best interest of historic preservation in the town.
Because I've heard from some people that want to get rid of the demolition delay, but that's just what.
But we're not here to put something in our master plan that the board charged with this bylaw enforcement does not support.
I don't have a problem taking that one out.
Anyway.
It is now eight thirty. Dan?
Yes.
Before we open the public hearing.
All right.
Because I don't think we want to.
We don't? I think that's hoping to close the public hearing.
We don't have, from what I understand in discussion with Norman today, we don't have a parking agreement that we can share with the public at this point. It's still a confidential agreement. I don't know how we can approve a document that we can see. And then part of the certification that we need to do for the library, which is, we have to find that meets all zoning. Until we have the parking, we can't, you know, it's a chicken and egg type thing. So I understand that they're making lots of progress on it. And it's coming along and it's between the church and the lawyers and hopefully it's gonna happen too.
Yeah, we have no idea when. And I'm not, I'm not quite sure why we need to, why you need to see the agreement.
Because we have to give a special permit. How do we give a special permit on something we haven't even seen? We've always required to see the agreement. And everyone needs to give it.
Well, maybe if you just step back and just think about, I think what we're really asking for is the use of the four or five spaces in front of the library. Because we meet parking under the bylaw for the library use. There's no question that we meet, meet that parking. And there's no question that we meet the parking for the meeting room by itself. What you're asking us to do is provide parking for two main uses at the same time. You're asking us to try to park, full parking for the meeting space, and you're asking us to try to full parking for the library.
So you'd be looking at us to set up conditions that you can't use them at the same time.
That's what I would like to see happen.
But, but that didn't, but that, the library. Maybe we're gonna defer into the discussion without opening up the hearing. And I also don't want to lose a bunch of members. Number one tonight, we only have one, it's, I think, one, two, three, four, five, so there's not enough to approve the inspection permit. So we, we're kind of, we're stuck anyway.
Special permit is six votes.
Can I ask one question? I noticed that somewhere in the materials, there was the provision that, you know, suppose you went forward and you had your agreement, that somewhere along the line, if the agreement no longer ceases to exist, for whatever reason, that then the conflicting uses of meeting facilities could not be used until some other comparable agreement came, came into being. You got that somewhere, you know, if one were to fall through, then you have to come up with another one.
Some kind of future of archdiocese could sell the church.
Exactly. So there was that provision that if something in the future, the agreement no longer held, then the meetings basically would be on hold until a new parking arrangement to provide the parking was allowed. So could not this kind of plan be approved with the understanding that the meeting space and the parking, that generates the parking could not go forward until agreement is had? I mean, can we, if we were able to make a provision that in the future, if the part, the existing agreement no longer holds, then a new has, you know, one has to be executed, can't we approve this now with the understanding that the meeting use not go forward until an initial agreement is aint?
That's, that's kind of what I was suggesting that.
We're still putting a hold on that parking demand use until all the ducks are in the row.
But did, I mean, the library could still have, use that meeting for their children's reading program or their mom and me program or whatever else they do there. Because a lot of libraries have need. It's not uncommon for a library to have a meeting. What I think Beta and Ken is suggesting is that, you know, the library's open, three nights a week, they're open till eight o'clock. So if we held a Plainwood meeting, for example, starting at seven o'clock, it'd be an hour overlap of when the library could potentially be packed and the meeting would be packed for a separate use. And that's when we run into the issue. But I think that's akin to asking us to design the parking lot for the five hundred year store. It's not gonna happen that often.
If I may, I, going back to original, as this was a function room for the library with the meeting being ancillary. And I don't think any place we ever anticipated that any function rooms of the library would be separated out. So I think Claire's argument makes sense. But I think saying you're gonna have a library function that may attract a hundred people in that room while the library is open is okay, just because it's a library function. And I think that's the issue that I have. You're still having a hundred people in the room, whether it's a third-party meeting or a library program, it doesn't make any difference. There's still a hundred people in the room. But I think I would be supportive of saying you wouldn't have X number of people in the function room, whether it's a library program or a third-party meeting, until the parking is in place.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying. That, you know, if you can't get all the parking ducks in a row tonight, you could go ahead and start building, but you won't be able to start this function room aspect until you do get a parking.
Are you saying you could build the function room, but you couldn't actually use the function room?
Well, the same way as the parking agreement were to go amiss, they have to be moved.
I think we're getting almost into the public hearing area. I mean, we're, which I don't think we want to do because we don't have enough members and we're losing members like Matt. We could take it, I thought we were headed with the agreement, we're gonna solve all these problems. And from what I understand, the number of parking spots provided by the church take care of everything from.
It would, yes.
And so, so that's, that's where up until a few minutes ago, we were headed down that path. We could spend a lot of time writing a bunch of conditions that talk about lack of use and whatever. And they don't do it at the next meeting, but I don't want to start trying to draft something on this kind of side. I personally prefer to go down the method of getting the parking sort of, you're in zoning requirements.
I agree. Because to do something tonight without a forum.
Well, it doesn't, doesn't agree any good. We can't, we can't vote on it tonight anyway.
You got two weeks, right, until the next meeting.
Right, and hopefully your church in the town can get together and resolve it. And if, if it's not looking like that on, say, Monday before the meeting, you'll ask Elaine to write up a bunch of page worth of conditions.
Mr. Chairman?
Just one comment. Occupancy is slated for May or June or July of two thousand seventeen. So I think we have time to work out the parking agreement, but I would.
The problem that we have is that we have to make a finding as part of our approval that all zoning requirements are met.
I understand.
And until we have parking, they aren't.
So I think what you're proposing, if in fact we don't have that in place to basically put a proviso on, you know, limited operations until that happens, that's fine.
That would be, that would be a series of conditions. But it'll, it'll take more than just a little bit of crafting. But that wasn't the way we were going when we left the meeting at last time.
No, we had hoped it would be done, but based on.
From what I understand, the principals have agreed to it. That's what Norman has told me. It's just getting signatures on an agreement.
No, it's gotta go, it's gotta go to the town attorney, it's gotta go to the archdiocese attorney.
The town attorney wrote it.
That's right, so that's why the archdiocese attorney's probably gonna have many comments.
Well. We want, you know, we'd like to see it, you know, part, part of what we try to do is, is to have a public hearing where we invite comments from the public in it, not a meeting in public. And part of that is we'd like to attach all the information to our agenda so that members of the public can see what, what we're considering things on. And we request that you try to get it there by the Thursday before the meeting. I mean, we, we kind of gave you a lot of slack this time, as far as I was concerned. And was entertaining it up till four thirty-five o'clock today, if we had an agreement. But I was told we couldn't share the agreement. So we're getting there.
Well, I don't share Scott's enthusiasm that we have a lot of time, because I don't think we do have a lot of time. I just have no idea how long this is gonna take.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I think again, the odds of you, of us having that agreement in place by their next meeting are probably zero. So I think the provisions that you're talking about, limiting the use of that room, because you have to be able to approve it, this, you know, approve it with all the criteria, I think, I would say that probably has to, that condition has to be part of the approval. And then as we get, and once you have the agreement, it could then be, be filed and you could amend it.
I don't disagree with that, but what we're, we're building a library here. And we meet the bylaw criteria for parking for a library.
Not a library with a function room.
In the special permit conditions, there was a condition that said that no certificate of occupancy shall be issued, which allows uses of the building that require more than twenty-four parking spaces until the off-site parking agreement is recorded, there are just few deeds. You could have that as a condition of the site plan as well.
Let's, let's not talk about it in the non-public hearing here, but Elaine, your task with, with putting together some conditions to talk about, getting options. I think the best thing is to push on the town to agree and.
Well, who's that on our side to push?
You know, Father Cannon too.
Sorry, I just want to ask one question. There is, Elaine's been very helpful for me in providing me all fifteen hundred endorsed plans, a record of them, in terms of what the process is here. And, and one of the things that you're, you're doing is, is you're approving the site plan based on the zoning being compliant. And the question I've asked, and, and I've researched zoning bylaws, and I will go through all of, not the fifteen hundred because only, as you can tell, five hundred are single lots. And only fifty are multiple lots consolidated to a single lot. But I, I still have the outstanding question that the library is combining two lots and they're asking that the rear yard lot line be vacated. I, I'm looking for precedent. If I find it, then I'll withdraw my question. But I've not yet found any precedent where two lots are combined and the rear lot has been eliminated. I, I will continue to look for that. But I'm just, I just want to go on record as saying that this is something I'm, I'm interested in. And I think it is privy to the site plan review. And I thank Elaine for providing me the information.
Talk about it when we're doing it informal, again.
Ken, did you want to mention we do have an A R plan here, folks to combine the lots?
Okay.
It was submitted today.
Okay, so we do, we can consider that in a few seconds here. So I'm, I'm looking for a motion to continue to October nineteenth at nine fifteen. Seconded for the discussion, seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone staying? Motion carries.
What time did you say, nine fifteen?
Nine fifteen.
All right.
And we're, we're just about, you know, we're down to parking and then going to conditions. And look at Elaine's memo beforehand and let's see if it proposed conditions, so we'll be ready for comment.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll have to consider the A R for the library. I think everyone does what we, that's what we're about to do. Elaine, as we normally say, does this meet all the requirements?
It does. It does include in lots, just ten lots to lots, it's just, it's a condition.
Further questions from anyone? Going to call the office to sign, sign the A R lot for the library.
Second.
We'll be seconded for the discussion, seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. You guys are down there, you're in the right, you missed the two figures.
Yeah, we didn't get a recorder.
As close wrapping this up, I've got a couple other things. I presented some of the housing recommendations to Zach for the three, the three ones about affordable housing. And they were very interested in taking those up. Elaine is writing up a couple of changes that I need to consider for the word. The other thing is I've heard we've gotten school kid reports for legacy farms. And we'll talk about that maybe at our next meeting in more detail. Elaine will have all the numbers. What I understand, the whole thing units are kind of on track, but rental in the two hundred and forty is higher than expected.
By how much? By a lot?
By a lot.
I think there's fifty-two children there.
And they anticipate.
Thirty-nine.
So what was the anticipation? I mean, they gave us like a rough idea.
I think nineteen was the high.
Oh, they thought nineteen was kind of.
Or the median. I think Judy thought it would fluctuate over time, but I think this was higher than even she anticipated.
So they thought about twenty kids and we got almost fifty.
But they don't stay there, not, we don't know. We've heard anecdotally that it's perhaps people who are moving in there because schools started waiting for a home to be vacated.
Right.
Can you find out also what the occupancy is in the two forty?
How many units?
Yeah, are they fully rented? I mean, I think that's kind of part of that, you know. I mean, if, if they're all two forty, that's one thing. If they're short a few, no, it's more than half because I, I've heard they're, you know, I think they're pretty well occupied, but, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'd love to know that. Okay, anyone else have stuff to do?
I do. Just one other thing, we were talking about this housing section. And I noticed that the board discussed this flexible, you know, it's the, for every ten units, you gotta provide what affordable. And there's discussion about, nobody's built the affordables and we're getting the money. And I was thinking, well, you know, the amount of money, if we don't do with something with it over time, costs are going up. It's gonna buy less and less, so, but, you know, the idea of eliminating it, I mean. idea of eliminating it, I mean, at least having that there was some sort of, A, some sort of incentive, and it gave the town something for the fact that we're getting, you know, maybe we're okay through whatever year it was, but it's still putting us back every time. In fact, I was thinking that, right now, we're seeing all these developments that come in at 17, or 18, or 19. They know exactly what they're doing. They come in right under the 20. That, number one, I don't see eliminating it. That just takes away the one bit of clout that we have. I would like to see that for every additional unit, you know, between 10, that a proportional payment be made. So, you know, instead of a full unit, you pay, if you build 17, you build, you know, you have to put in 70% of it. So there's a payment for every extra unit.
Could round up, so as soon as you're 11, you're 2 units.
Well, you could either do that, that really hits them hard, or at the very least, they pay a tenth. You know, maybe two over to 20.
I think the, I think that didn't give a solution to that problem, it just said there's a problem, and either fix it, which I agree with all what you just said, Claire. I tried that with the ZAC last year, and they didn't get too far with it, because, you know, it's this nine and under, you know, I mean, we can get nine subdivision, nine unit subdivisions a depth, or you just have, on every new house, you have, I'll say, a tax, affordable housing tax on, on a new house, I mean, if you had it per unit.
That would not be legal, you could do that.
Well, that's kinda what you're doing, though.
No, I mean, they're choosing to build a certain number of homes.
Okay.
And do that by special permit, but you can't require a tax for every unit.
I like the idea, though.
I mean, it's, it's kind of the same thing. I mean, I mean, you know.
Absolutely. Well, it's not getting us the units, but I wouldn't take away the one that we have.
It's, yeah, I, I, I'm not sure what we have is working as good as it should, and that's why I just had that one in there to really look at it. Or you might just say, you know, it really can't work fairly. I mean, you know, this might be as good as you get, or maybe you just say, hey, really, this is kind of a tax on houses and, you know.
All of a sudden.
I mean, you know, I mean, maybe not call her, maybe you get rid of it, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those where I think we discussed it the last one, when, you know, people are building billion-dollar houses, and you're gonna have a...
Stick something in there.
Kind of a...
Well, I can understand you're not gonna put an affordable in the middle of million-dollar houses, but, you know, you do build up a fund where somewhere along the town could decide to build something, and now you've got some seed money for it.
And, and, you know, that might be some of the seed money that renovates the center school, if, if you decide to go with affordable elderly housing. Or, or maybe you build something when you need it on the Fruit Street land that we designate, or some of these other properties that we've seemed to have bought. I mean, it's...
But all these developers that are coming in and making all this money, and they just put us further and further, further behind, and eventually, at the end of the day, we're gonna get stuck with it all, including being open again to a 40B. 40Bs still exist at that point in time, so, you know, it just seems to me that they should be there.
I think, if we're smart enough at that time, we will either create some of our own, like rental housing. I mean, rental is the, that's how we, how we solve the math problems.
But, but that's money we could put towards that, otherwise it all comes out of the taxpayers' pockets, so...
Or, or you just prove another use. I mean, I mean, you know, that...
On the housing market, it might have something to say about that, too. At some point, the housing market's gonna change, maybe some other product, but you don't wanna build a nut apartment, so, you can't guarantee that it works.
What was the, when you said ZAC was kind of lukewarm on it, what was the basis of, was it they didn't know what to do with it, or were they actually opposed?
Part of the problem, they were looking at a different formula, and part of the problem was that the formula they were looking at, that once you got to a certain number, it just became unrealistic, that people were paying too much for what it was worth. So it didn't work, the formula that they were looking at didn't work. I forget, it was, had to do with a proportional payment. So that if you were building, say, 18 or 19, the amount of money you pay was far in excess of the value of an affordable home. So it didn't, didn't match at that point. So it wasn't as simple as having a proportional payment could be more regi, more rational and logical.
But anyway, I did not propose that to look at from ZAC, plus all the ones that they came up from their public theory. Anyway. Need for some fun stuff to think about. Okay, anyone else have anything? We're getting out of here before 9 o'clock, which is good, and unfortunately, didn't get a lot done either.
I had just kind of an open-ended question. You know, I always, I just feel like our zoning bylaws are a reflection of our vision for the town, how we, as a, as a community, decide we want the town to look. And we know what the bar is for passing zoning bylaw, it's pretty high. You have to go through all the processes, and you have to go to the town meeting, and you have to get a two-thirds vote. And a particular project that I will be recusing myself on came up that sort of got me thinking about this. I always feel like when there's an appeal to something, or something goes to CBA, that that board should be generally reflecting the will of the town, and, and, so you wanna put on a deck that's, you know, eight feet from the property line instead of 10 feet, and they say, well, you know, that's not too bad, that's still generally in the spirit. But when things come up, and obviously, what's coming before this board is coming before that board, but it just got me thinking. When you have, the fact that we can have things come up before an unelected appointed board that can totally just, basically ignore and, and give an approval to a type of a, of a housing, whether it's, in this case, it's density, that is above and beyond what the town has demonstrated through its zoning bylaws, it wants like our maximum, unless you're a special district like an Osmond or of a, or, and if you, eight bedrooms per acre is the maximum, and then all of a sudden, you get something that's, you know, 34 bedrooms. Is, is there any mechanism to, and that's just one example, there could be other things where things come up, and they're just, they can go for an, to the Board of Appeals and get something permitted that would never be permitted anywhere in town under the normal standard. Is there any way that any, boards can be required to limit their authority to the general principles of, of the law?
Well, Norman, you know, there's criteria for the board to consider, and, you know, when they consider that criteria, sometimes, you know, they'll, they'll come to a different conclusion than others might come to. But the criteria is pretty broad.
Yeah, the criteria are broad. It might be like, is it a dachshund or something, but... I, I would like to find a way for, you know, zoning boards to be required to generally enforce, generally make decisions that are in keeping with the general spirit of the existing bylaws of the town, but I don't know how that happens.
I think that, or just like this board, I think they do, they're doing that. I don't say that through a couple of years' worth, I'd say that they believe that's what they're doing.
And if they don't, you go to the appointing authority and say, hey, look what these guys are doing. Maybe appoint somebody different.
I mean, it just, okay, you know, and that's nothing that this board can do, I just, it just philosophically seems odd. You can permit things that are literally, you know, four times denser, for one example, than what our zoning bylaws allow, and, and that can be somehow assumed to be upholding zoning principles of the town. It's clearly way out of the spectrum, and, and that could happen in other things, I just...
Well, I think the only limit really is, I mean, this is pre-existing, non-informal.
Well, and I don't wanna discuss the any particular cases, just, I, I didn't know if it was...
If I, if I applied to, to build eight units on my little lot, could they grant that?
You know, every case is different. They would review it on the temerits and use the criteria that are in the bylaw. Just like this board does.
Yeah.
So we can know that someone was eight.
Which bylaw do they look at? Is there, is there a town bylaw that they're looking at?
I don't think we wanna talk about that particular case.
No, I don't wanna talk about a case, I was just, I was just wondering, who, who sets the guidelines for how zoning enforcement or zoning boards work?
The basic, we might consider statute. And then some bylaws, they have a little bit...
And that's state statute. That's a state statute.
And that's what the criteria come from.
Yeah. By the way, just, just questioning, too, because we're asking on the goals that got eliminated, but it's one thing that was back here about established design architectural review by the DRB for multifamily residential dwelling proposals, and we do that anyway, I think.
I think the board refers...
The DRB's been doing it.
The board, board refers them to the designer review board for review, but it's not required under the bylaw. For garden apartments, for example.
Okay, so...
It's an informal...
Yeah, because like, we looked at Davenport Village, so that's been just out of the goodness of their heart.
Because the board values the input, yeah.
Right, but it's not required.
No, so the board refused to send it, but...
Or the, or the applicant wishes to come.
Put in a planning board, you gotta grant a special permit.
Right. Right, because it's discretionary, the planning board, so the board can say, well...
Yeah, yeah. I know DRB has had, we've had a couple of situations recently where it seems like the applicant, because DRB is advisory, has just said, thanks.
Well, for site plan review, we don't have a, I'll say a hook on aesthetics. I mean, you know, if it isn't site planned, whether the safety, public welfare, and it's like...
The general, yeah.
I mean, 'cause of the, the case law, you know, if they wanna paint it purple, that's not a criteria that we could use to, that's why we got rid of the exterior, what we love the site plan with, because we couldn't, we couldn't uphold. So we're asking designer review board to persuade them to do things in the best interest of things that, quite frankly, we can enforce.
I think an applicant, if the planning board tells the applicant that they value the input of designer review, and...
We do do that.
Would like them to, expects them, or likes them to follow through, it would add a lot of teeth to what the board could do.
Right, but, but a lot of the stuff that designer review board is saying, if, if we wrote that in a condition, and that got appealed, we would lose it, because it's beyond what administrative site plan can do as a criteria. We cannot force them to, to put green shutters on a non-condolence.
No.
Or, or blue roof on a red roof in.
Here's something to think about, something that we talked about, it's act, we're talking about aesthetics and ways to, you know, increase regulation or to, to mold something. And I think the best way to do that is through historic districts. So you might wanna think about expanding the districts.
One problem with historic districts is, you know, that, that's a very limited area, and it's a very high bar, because you have to get all the home, the property owners, and, you know, I think we started, we started designer review with the idea that, you know, we want, we want some, some say, over the general aesthetics and character of, of the town, and, you know, manage the world somewhat.
And I think designer review board has done a pretty good job of making projects look better from the first set of plan to the, to the second, you know, second set of plans. And the fact that we have had a couple of people before us, and we said, no, go to the designer review board first. I mean, they, they're, they kinda get the message, I think, and things, value the contribution, all right. There's a difference between valuing it and trying to have them be able to do more than they can under, than even we can do under the statute.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, some of it is just sending the message that this board supports them. You know, maybe if, if they come back and they haven't taken any of the board's recommendations, that you push a little harder, saying, you know, we'd really like to see, you know, do what they're saying.
I think, I think this board does that.
But I'm only mentioning that because it seems there have been several instances lately now on some sign review and other things that actually means that I wasn't that, but I've heard back that, you know, nothing, nothing was...
Signs are a different, different thing, ZAC is, is looking at signs again.
Yeah. At a certain point, it makes the board say, why am I wasting my time?
I mean, it's gonna get, maybe it'll get worse under the Supreme Court.
Sign bylaw, it won't be different.
And Supreme Court, what do you mean, Supreme Court?
There was a Supreme Court ruling, maybe six months or a year ago, which is why we didn't go forward with the amendment last year to the sign bylaw, because town council said this opinion from Supreme Court was coming, and we might wanna wait. So now that they rendered a decision that basically every community has to revise their sign bylaws, and I don't think it can be as strict or as, I think it'll be very different.
You have freedom of speech type of...
You have freedom of speech, and you can't, you may not be able to have different size signs based on use and, and things like that, so...
So after we just redid the sign bylaw?
So town council will be advising us, advising us on how...
It's, it's, it's not necessarily gonna get better.
No.
Well, it's going to be more freer.
It'll be very uniform. The question is, I just think it's, it's gonna be interesting to select, you know, what level of, you know, size and...
Does it sound like then they're saying, if you wanna pick one size fits all, say all size, everybody's sign has to be this size and this, you know, and you can say whatever you want?
Somebody like that, but if they, I'm sure town council can find us ways to manage that, but...
And that's, it takes effect immediately?
At least unnoticed.
And the justices, I think, were, what is it, nine zip or whatever, there's nine just, it was a full...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was, you know, it was one of these free speech trumps, everyone signed.
They'll put logos, they think they're all good.
How about size? Can we still just size just to...
I agree so.
Some massive thing to control yourself.
Right, but you might not be able to change sizes in the town, you know.
Yeah, so we'll have to look at that, and maybe in different zoning districts, we'll make our price.
Yeah, so it would not apply like in the historic district?
Right, so, you know, there's a whole bunch of issues to consider, so that's why I did request use of town council to approve, so they'll be spearheading guidance on that.
Probably wise decision. Or, or we just continue where we are and wait till we get sued on it or something.
Well, it could take five years to get a bylaw adopted, as it took last time, so that's right now.
Okay. Anything else? Sorry that we didn't get much done tonight, but, anyway, can you promote motion to adjourn? So moved. We seconded, all those favor adjournments, say aye. All opposed, all...